Workshop to order, and it's seven o'clock. Thanks everybody for coming in early tonight. What we're going to do is I decided I would stand up here so that if you have questions, I can see you better, because I want to go over some of the work that you've already done. And what we've done is we've summarized the work that you've done and tried to prepare for you answers to some of the questions that you may have had. So we'll start with a handout that the Board of Education has provided to you, and it says at the top, Krec schools. Handout looks like this. And it lists for you, because you asked, the number of students and the tuition that the Board of Education pays for students that attend schools such as the Academy of Aerospace and Engineering, the Discovery Academy, the Greater Hartford Academy of Arts, Medical Professions and Teacher Preparation, the Museum Academy, Public Safety Academy, Two Rivers Magnet Middle School, University of Hartford Magnet School, and then the Learn Schools, Connecticut River Academy, a student goes there, Bloomfield Global Experience, and then in the City of Hartford Breakthrough Elementary, Breakthrough Magnet, Capital Preparatory, Classical Magnet, Dr. Raymond Balans's STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, Hartford Magnet Trinity College, Pathways Academy of Technology, RJ Kinsella Magnet, Sports and Medical Sciences, STEM Magnet, and then the University High of Science and Engineer. So the total number of students that attend Magnet schools from the town of Portland are 58. Twenty-two attend Krec schools, Capital Region Education Council, and the other schools located in the different communities, 36, for a total of 58. And then if you turn to the Open Choice Tuition Grant, we have 36 open-choice students attending Portland for the calendar year 14, or the school year 14-15, with a total cost of $143,597. The Open Choice Tuition Grant, $144,700. And Laura Webb is here from the Board of Education, and Mary Ann Rowe, Chairman of the Board of Education, is here tonight if you have any questions on that. Thank you for the information. Second, I wanted to go through some of the reductions that were made in General Government, and these are located in your books, but I've summarized them with Tom Robinson's help. And I've asked Tom to kind of be the scribe and go through to make sure if there are changes or errors, that he would record them as we go along. So I think that would provide some order to our discussion tonight. So we will start with account 01-007, which is Elections, and in your books, if you wanted to follow along with the chart, it starts on page 27. So on page 27, Elections, there's been a reduction in the Election Worker Stipends of $1,000, and a reduction in Elections, that line item, account number 69000. Elections Supplies, a reduction of $1,000. If you turn to page 29, within the Finance Department, we added $2,000 to rental use of buildings. When we went back over and looked at some of these numbers, we felt that's a more accurate number, of $10,000 for rental use of buildings. And there is an addition to revenue of $2,000 down below, which we will go over. So that's really a wash, because it's a reduction, excuse me, it's an increase in expenditures and an increase in revenues, so it would be no difference to the bottom line. There is an addition of $1,000 to Data Processing. We also felt that was a more accurate number, goes from $7,000 to $8,000. And then within the account, also on the same page, 29, account 88016, miscellaneous, there's a reduction of $3,000. And if we proceed to account 017, which would be on page 43, that's Technology Department. As you asked us to do, we went into the Gas and Diesel Fuel Account and reduced it by approximately 10 percent, so there's a reduction of $200 on that line item. If you go to account number 20, which is Fire Department, on page 45, in the Gas and Diesel Fuel Account, line item 51001, there's a reduction of $1,300 in that line item. Also, on the same page, Fire Department, account 62004, Heating Fuel, a reduction of Then if we go to account 23, which would be on page 51, Police Department, line item 51001, Gas and Diesel Fuel, a reduction of $8,000 in that line item. Proceeding to account number 25, which is on page 55, that would be the Building Department, also account 51001, Gas and Diesel Fuel, a reduction of 10 percent, which is $220 on that line item. If you proceed to account 31, which is the Public Works Director, page 57, the Gas and Fuel line item is reduced by $310, also reflection of 10 percent decrease. The next account is 32, on page 59. Same account, 51001, Gas and Diesel Fuel, a reduction of $16,000. Vehicle Maintenance, account 33, page 61, also the Gas and Diesel Fuel, account 51001, reduction of $500. Okay? All right. Going to account 34, which is the Town Engineer, account number 38004, Site Plan Review, there is a reduction of $500. On the same page, under General Services, account number 38007, there's a reduction of $500 in that line item as well. Moving on to account 36, which is page 67. Grounds Maintenance, account 51001, Gas and Diesel Fuel, a reduction of $3,250. Account number 37, Town Building Maintenance, page 69, 51001, Gas and Diesel Fuel, a reduction Account 55, which would be on page 97, the Gas and Diesel Fuel line item, 51001, reduction Portland Library, account number 65, page 99, under Heating Fuel, there is a reduction of $1,250. The account number on that one is 62004. Yep. $1,250.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next would be account 93, which is on page 107. This is the Interfund Transfers Out. Also, this would be Diesel Fuel, but it's just going to be a reduction in the account 90001, Transfer Out Animal Control, reduction of $250. That's because it's only the line item for Fuel that's reflected in that reduction. On that same page, Interfund Transfers Out, line item 9005, Transfer Out Resource Recovery, there's a reduction in that line item of $16,930. And that's due to some changes in the cost for benefits for that department reduction. So the total, as you can see from your chart that Tom drew up for us, is $55,310. Now that amount means in General Government, you have an increase of a total, for the total budget, of $115,447, which is 0.94 percent increase. So it's less than 1 percent change in the expenditures for General Government. Previously, we had been at 1.37, which was the budget I had presented to you before the workshop started. 0.94. It's less than 1 percent. So on the 12, originally, your budget this year is $12,311,570, and with an addition of $115,447, it becomes, hold on, $12,427.17, right?
What were you trying to do there?
I'm just trying to tell them what the total budget would be, Tom.
What it was?
No.
Twelve million.
Projected $12,427,170.
For the General Government.
For General Government. So to repeat, your current budget, just to give you a reflection on your budgets, $12,311,570 was the adopted budget last May of 2014. This budget is an increase of $115,447, so it brings your General Government budget total to $12,427, excuse me, $12,427,170. So that's General Government. What I wanted to do next is go back to the long sheet, which is a summary of what you had asked us to do. There's some additional work that we did. The middle of the page, 01-000, General Government and Board of Education Revenue Charges for Services. The Property Rental, there's a reflection of the revenue increased by $2,000, that we increased the expenditures up above at $2,000 for the building rental. So that's just for bookkeeping purposes, we have to do. In terms of the Sewer Department, again, it would be a change in user charges and a change in the Gas and Diesel Fuel of $400 in each line item, the revenue and the expenditures. Same for the Water Department, the metered sales would go down by $575, and the Gas and Diesel Fuel would go down by $575. These accounts that I'm mentioning just now do not affect your General Government, that's Water and Sewer. Those budgets you have to adopt by the beginning of May, by the way. Animal Control Department, the transfer in, the General Fund is reduced by $250, and the expenditures for Gas and Diesel Fuel is reduced by $250. The transfer in the General, from the General Fund to Resource Recovery, that's reduced by $16,930. The Medical Insurance, a further breakdown within that department of Resource Recovery, reduction of $16,000 for the medical insurance I mentioned earlier, and a reduction in Gas and Diesel Fuel of $930. Within the Capital Improvement Plan, we made suggested and necessary changes. Within the Complete Streets area, we cannot use LoCIP money for that function. So we take that out, $13,149, that's LoCIP grant money, and we suggest that that go to the subdivision regulations, which is something Deanna spoke about, if you recall, during the workshops. That would go $10,000 from LoCIP, and the remaining $3,149 would then go to the Park and Field Improvements. In terms of the Complete Streets and the dollars that have been requested to do some work on that, I would suggest that as we proceed with this year's budget, if there are residual dollars within planning and development, that some of those dollars be transferred to capital, to take care of their planning. But I'm not suggesting there be anything in the General Government budget for next year, but rather some identification of unused funds to go to capital later in the year. Also, we had a call from the Fire Chief. Chief Shay can't be here tonight, but he had asked that you consider taking $8,000, which is in the Porta Count Fit Testing Equipment, and rather than have it in that line item, he's asking that it be put in a line item, and it's in your Long Range Capital Plan, to put some money toward, this certainly won't take care of it entirely, but some money towards Site Plan for Company Three. The Fire Department is interested in looking at either new or improvements to Company Three.
We haven't heard about this before, right?
Well, we did, I'm going to say it's about three or four years ago. The State of Connecticut owns land behind Company Three, and the town had requested and was granted some of the acreage or some of the land behind Company Three in anticipation of the need for improvements to that building. So yes, it's been known that there needs to be improvements to that building. The plan for it and how we proceed is something we need to do more research on, Ryan, but we had acquired some land that would allow us to look at the potential, because actually there was some land there we were using that's actually part of the state, you know, the, let's see, it's DEEP, I believe, that owns land behind Company Three. Right, Mary? Yeah. So this would be within your capital plan, it's already in the capital plan, if I'm not mistaken. What page, Tom? Page 138, 138 in your books? So you see Site Plan for Company Three, it's been in the plan, and there was a contemplation that we would put money in next fiscal year, 16-17, but what's been requested is that $8,000 be just moved down to that line item, to begin to save some dollars for that project. The chief felt that was an appropriate use of those dollars, and can make arrangements for the other item through another means.
That Porta Fit Testing Equipment that we had budgeted for eight?
Mm-hmm.
Now we're taking it, just move it down the line?
Correct.
But now, what are we going to do on the, what is the Porta Count Fit Testing Equipment? Do we need that, like now?
Ray, can you indicate?
They're required to have their SCBA tested on an annual basis for poor characters, to make sure that they meet the requirements. So I think he's talking about probably taking out his operating budget.
Yeah, where are we going to get the money?
We're going to borrow someone's.
I think he's, I think he understood that he could get equipment in another way.
Okay. So that's still, it's going to be addressed though. You guys will get.
He has, he's mandated to do that.
That's what I'm saying. So it will be addressed, but right now we don't have any money budgeted for it. But we don't, and you don't expect or anticipate that we're going to need any money to get this done, through green or whatever?
I think.
For this next year.
I think part of this, they just put in for an SCBA grant, so if I'm not mistaken, part of that could be coming.
From there.
As that package in there, so.
Yes, I think you're right, yes.
Thank you.
The other thing is, back to the long sheet, account 08-141, Capital Improvement Plan, Parks and Field Improvements, there's an error on your sheet. That should read $25,000, not $65,000, that's a typo. Should read 25000. And then under the updated budget, should read 28149. That's another typo. And the 3149 is correct. Ryan, you had indicated you may have some other questions on General Government?
Yeah, I did some more homework.
Okay.
Over the last week. So what I did was, and I've never really done this before, but I took our actual expenditures so far from the revenue report and expenses from last week, and I just compared them to what we had budgeted, and I was looking for, you know, high variances, you know, a lot of available funds still. And I thought that there might be some areas that maybe we could take a look at.
Sure.
So first, I'll start with us, Board of Selectmen, page 19. Let's see. So far, for the Board Clerk payroll, we have budgeted $3,500, but we've only used $12,68 so far this year. I'm wondering if there's, do we expect to hit $3,500?
I don't know.
Yeah. Do you think we could take, like, do you think you could take $1,000 out there?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how far along we are in payroll.
Well, for next year.
That depends on what you mean, you have different issues.
Yep. It's just an estimate that we put in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we're at 15, 17, and 12 to 13, 12, 68, 13 to 14. And so, I don't know, $3,500 just seems, it seems like we're going to have trouble hitting it for this past year, so I don't know if we should, maybe $500, I don't know, I'm just looking at the actual, there's any.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
What did they spend so far?
$12,68, so about $1,300. And so, is that accurate, Tom, through?
Wait, is that, that's what we spent last year, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let me, let me get that.
Thirty-five hundred.
It's on here, I'm sorry.
Go on, thank you.
Yeah. No, excuse me, $1,000. We've only spent $1,000 this year. That's, that's where I got that from. So, or at least, so I don't know how up-to-date this past report is of the payroll.
How was that run?
Uh, 4-1.
Something in March.
So I mean, I think there's a little bit of play there, you know?
That's an estimate based on a year's worth of activity. So I mean, if there's issues arise where you have more meetings, or there's items where if you're just going to do a bonding, or you're going to do this, or you're going to do that, there needs to be clerks. It's an estimate, and that's clearly, that's what that is, just an estimate of what the board clerk made work in the year. It's going to be highs and it's lows.
Yeah, but we haven't gone above $1,500 in the past three or four years. So that's, like, so if we're budgeting $3,500, and the most we've gone to is 15, 17, and that was 12 to 13, I think if we took $1,000 out and said $2,500, I think that's still, you know, pretty reasonable. That'd be for the.
As long as you don't go over. I mean, there's no place else to take it from, so.
Yeah.
You got to make sure that if you don't have a lot of meetings.
That's all it costs. It just, it makes me very low.
What's under Program Services, is that where the videotaping is? Yes.
Okay, that was going to be my next question.
That's the videotaping.
Yeah, we've spent $1,000 so far for the nine months of this year, so. All right. Next one was, oh, okay, so Program Services, I was just going to ask about that. That's the recording of the meeting?
It's also, if you do any special events, like we do a thank you dinner at the end of the year for some of our volunteers, and you have also done other events for thank you receptions, that's where that would come from.
Okay. So, because on, Susan, on the first Select Woman's Budget, on page 21, there's also the Program Services.
Yeah.
And so I'm assuming that's probably something that hasn't been expensed yet, right?
Right. And if it's a year that we spend it, I do. If I don't, I don't spend it.
Okay.
But on occasion, there are events that we host, and I think one year we did some economic development kinds of projects there, where we tried to help some of our downtown businesses in terms of some of their improvements. We looked at helping them pay for some things that they were doing. So it depends really on the year whether those dollars are expended or not.
Okay. Elections, voter canvassing, we haven't, we budgeted $1,000 last year, sorry, page 27, and year-to-date, we've done zero voter canvassing. I'm just, why do we budget for it if we're?
It's a requirement on the part of the registrars of voters, and I believe they do it in the spring.
I think it's May.
Yeah.
It's in May, okay.
I'm for sure.
See, in my mind, I'm thinking elections, the fall, and, you know, so, okay.
I'm sure it's the springtime.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Tom, I just was wondering about the service contracts. I'm sure, on page 29, what are, why the big jump from 13 to 14 to 14 to 15, the $20,000 to $28,500? Just, we probably had some additional contracts or renewals, I'm just wondering what those were.
Yeah, we have, there's a contract that we have not been paying, that was the payroll system for the penal prize, because we did not implement it yet, so that will be fully utilized.
Thanks. Oh, the other one on page 29 was bank fees. You have, we have $22,50 budgeted, but year-to-date, we're, we're at $437 so far for this year. Do you think that's a little high, the bank fees?
Bank fees are all combs, I mean, so far, we've done very well with TD Bank. They've done a good job working with us. Right now, what that is, is there's multiple types of items we have to buy, like our check components and our bags and all those type of things. So it's, it's one of those ones that we got caught in the past, and, you know, it's just we, you, until you get hit with the fee, you don't know if you're really going to get hit with the fee, so.
Do you think we can take $500 out of that? Do you think there's, because I don't see us spending more than $487 in the past three years on that, and we have $2250 budgeted. I mean, do you expect $2250 in bank fees this year?
It's hard to say. I mean, it's two accounts and I know I'm going to have to implement related to potential activities that we haven't been involved in yet. So there could be fee structure there, otherwise I don't know, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to say. I would hope that I wouldn't, but.
What do you guys think?
I never want to pay bank fees.
Huh?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you, Brian.
I was making a joke, I don't like to pay bank fees.
I did have that one question too. But I think, didn't we raise that before, were we changing banks, or was that a while ago?
Yeah, we were up by six or seven thousand a one point now, so. And yeah, doing good year-to-date, we're paying what, $430, $37. So it's still a lot of meat in there for a couple more months, just wondering if we lower for the rest of the year, if anything. You anticipating staying with these people and the fee should be the same here?
I mean, even at seven, 500, yeah, all right, 500.
What are you taking about, which one?
3305.
33005. Page 29.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Page 39 I had. Page thirty-nine I had, um, just conferences, meetings, and dues, um.
What page?
Uh, thirty-nine for town clerk, um, I noticed that we've only used, uh, two hundred and sixty-five dollars of, um, the meetings for two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen.
Well, we haven't had a town clerk, um, so.
I know, well, no, I mean, I'm talking.
Conferences and meetings, honestly, I, I don't think she was attending as many.
Yeah, so.
And I would anticipate that the new town clerk will need to, in terms of her acclamation to the new position. So I, I would not recommend that changing.
Yeah, I, I agree, I just wanted to, uh, to make sure of that.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, when you get a new town clerk, there's gonna be a lot to do.
It's in conference and meetings?
Uh, yeah, conferences and meetings, so, we've fifteen hundred's budgeted. Central services, page forty-one.
Hey, before you go on, real, real quickly, on, on vital statistics, uh, are we gonna be looking at a large increase on there also? We went from, uh, you know, like, a hun- two hundred bucks, and then we had a thousand. Are we good with that? You know, we've already spent, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars on it this year.
Well, the overall budget is reduced by twelve point two four percent.
I know that, yeah.
Yeah.
They're doing a good job.
You're not leaving that department very much money, it's, they're not here tonight, so.
Vital statistics is purely based on what people utilize as vital statistics.
Yeah.
So if somebody goes to Hartford, Milltown, and so on and so forth, then, uh, and, and gets a bill, we have to pay that, which is, if it's higher, they're gonna have some higher fees.
Well, what would that be like for?
Marriage license, prostitution, I don't have, I need vital, whether it's, is there vital statistics?
That department's down eleven, over eleven percent already, uh, because of some other reductions, so I, I think we can do that.
And also though, yeah, twelve to thirteen, I mean, they did spend eight fifty-seven, so it's one of those things that you just don't know what's gonna hit.
And as I said, you've shaved that by almost.
I didn't do a lot there, no.
Eleven and a quarter percent down.
I'm okay.
There's not much wiggle room there.
Um, so central services, page forty-one, um, a couple things, uh, data processing, what is that for, again, Tom, I'm sorry?
There isn't any type of data processing throughout the town. At all, it's, uh, decentralized, something that's, that's data, reason breaks down, it's central.
And three years ago, it was two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Yeah, and the other one that I had was postage, we've only used this year, um, three thousand, um, and.
So postage goes on, then in a year, and then it gets, uh, screen, scans a year, so.
Yeah, that's, I figured it had to, it had to be more so with timing, um, but yeah, I just, it just caught my eye, we, uh, only had thirty-one hundred so far this year in postage. Um, and, but we did, we have pretty much come close there, so I'm all right with that, what, what are we mailing that is, uh, gonna be so expensive?
Everything for the town, we mail, uh, that's out of that office, out of that line, in theory, so I mean, invoices that mail, I mean, the library invoices, they come out of that thick, they're, they're required on books, you know? It's thick, you know, huge pile, and, uh, it's just a requirement, we tried to go only electronic with them, but we're interested in that, because it didn't work, so.
With who?
With the, with the vendor, for the book vendor.
Is that all the tax bills, or the water in the sewer, is all that?
Water, water, water in the sewer, that comes out of the ta- water in the sewer comes out of the water in the sewer postage, yeah, tax bills go on there, we cover there, we cover all the, anything that goes out for the nutrition fund, we're putting there, covering that, a little mailing, so that, any receivables that we have, um, any poached, any mailings for the town, I mean, the voter canvassing. That at times is very expensive, and you can go and be out there, so I mean, it's, uh, it's all in there, the machine has a special code in it, so, you know, you know, you kind of, you know, if you get in there, unless they hill the code, and let's keep that kind of, you know, specialized, so. It's, uh, you know, and, you know, the, the machine, the actual machines are that, too.
Oh, okay.
The machines are in there, too, so it's just not postage, it's, I think there's a, every quarter, an eight hundred dollar charge for the machine.
Yeah.
Any supplies that go into that go over there?
Okay.
On the, uh.
Yeah, most.
The, uh, travel and mileage expenses, on this, on the.
The travel and mileage, travel mileage for where we live in the town.
Yeah, like fifteen hundred increased from the year, the actual to what was expended, and we still have, uh, I don't know, sixty, uh, sixty-something percent, just one percent left, we have.
There's one of the fifty-seven and a half cents a mile, and that's one off, and some people don't often, you know, uh, put in greatly, they'll go put it in when they recover one, so I have some expectation.
So that's like if they use their personal card, something for the reimbursements of?
Yeah, you know, like the billing official.
Yeah, I don't have a car, I use my own car.
One of them.
No, I use, no, it, seriously, that's for reimbursement for mileage, yep. And when people, Carl, go to trainings, they use their own vehicle.
Okay.
We don't have many fleet vehicles for employees to use.
All right, um, page forty-three, um, technology, I just, I noticed, um, uniforms, it's only, I know we only budgeted five hundred, um, and I noticed the same with the fire department, do, do they buy all their uniforms at like one time of the year, or something, I, I just don't.
This is, this is a union position, so it's a stipend.
Oh, okay.
So he gets five hundred dollars, and then the uni- the, uh, uniforms are, as the fire chief sees fit, he acquires uniforms, so if you get the people, or if somebody got promoted, or if somebody ripped it or ruined theirs, or whatever, uh, he does that based on whoever he's seen resemble.
And that, you're just talking to them.
Yeah.
And, and that also, in, um, we, we kind of doubled the, uh, telecommunications, and I know it was for the high school internet.
It's almost for a town hall, right?
Oh, yeah, the other new internet, it's gonna cost that much more to redo, like double it, is that gonna be a one-time expense, or it's gonna be, from now on, it's gonna be that kind of number?
Yeah, we have, we have a similar number to telephone, but in this area, we go to telecommunications, and this line, I'm a T ones and telephone, so that's a, not a different budget, but this is a more appropriate place for this specific, um, item.
For, uh, year to date, just for, uh, this current year that we're in, the tele- what caught my eye was the telecommunications, uh, year to date expense is ninety-five dollars, so, uh, what, what would that, um, so, and we had thirty-five hundred budgeted, so what, what's?
About a brand new phone system.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
To implement that, and then this will be a liability.
Oh, okay, thank you, I just figured it was something that.
That was one, I think the board had acquired a couple things, and then they actually, they paid for it, sometimes we buy a form, but this was when they expanded to the town hall, especially at the town hall, they acquired their own outlets there, where sometimes, you know, we do it, in this instance, they pay those.
Thank you.
Uh, one more, we get it here. And the, one on the line was in, uh, that same page, on the office equipment repairs and maintenance, it always seems that we're in the couple hundred dollar range, and we have budgeted fifteen hundred, you know? Eighty-five dollars that, you know, and a hundred and eighty-five before, year to date, right now, we're like eighty-two, so we're like eighty to a hundred, two hundred dollars, but we're budgeting, uh, fifteen hundred. Can we tighten that up at all, or you, you anticipate?
Probably wouldn't, you know, one of the reasons is that the, one, the one of the line items, he doesn't spend that much on, or whatever, one of those, all the other line items are overspending the budget.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't really touch that one, because even if it's not, it's addressed usually within its overtime, which is usually way over the allotment, um, I mean, that's another one, it's just, it, it is how it is, on a repair, if a repair hits or doesn't.
It doesn't seem that we're repairing or fixing anything, we're just.
If you look at the overtime line item, Carl, you see that that's.
Overtime line, I understand.
And that's dependent on the years. And the needs.
We're talking about repairs of equipment, office equipment, not overtime.
If anything, you would transfer it up to that other account that we typically go over in, I suppose.
That's what you would do.
I mean, what we try to do is keep to the bottom line in these accounts, and do our best at estimating them without being too.
I mean, most things, we, we try to repair, honestly, most things.
I know, it's not worth repairing, you toss them by now.
Repair, it's, it's either five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's obsolete, or whatever, yeah, I understand that.
I mean, it's like, this is easy, five, you know, if I had a game, I'd tell you what that was.
I, I'd just rather see that number be lower, put the money into purchasing, or, you know, wherever, like you say. So it's just, we're not doing too many repairs, I don't believe. All right.
You could transfer it into another line item within.
No, no, I understand, no, we'll, we'll keep it at that, and when it comes to that, we'll see.
Okay. Mike Quaterov, I wanted to convene the regular meeting, if that's okay?
I'll hurry up.
No, I'm not, I don't wanna hurry you, we can still continue, I just wanna start the other part of our meeting.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, to grounds maintenance sixty-seven, um, general contract work, it seemed low when I looked at it, we've only used eighteen hundred this year, and we had, uh, ninety-five hundred budgeted, and line item three six oh oh two. Why, why the jump from seven to ninety-five this year?
I believe what he's trying to do is, he typically is working behind, he's, he's actually gonna kind of, I believe that, uh, farming a little bit of work out for different subs.
If you look at fiscal notes, Rick, um, as Rick's saying, if you look at the fiscal notes, it says, general contract work, account number three six zero zero two, is increased by two thousand five hundred dollars, as the department intends to use contract services for specifically designated tasks and projects. So that is identified in your budget on page sixty-six.
It's just, I don't know.
Well, in general contract, we didn't use anything yet, right, just here?
A lot of, a lot of the work is done in the spring.
In the, yeah, so the.
Springtime. For grounds?
Keep that for grounds, everything to fix up the, what we messed up in the winter.
All right. Yeah, that's what I figured, most of this stuff is just due to timing, but I just wanted to, uh, go over it. Page twenty-seven, um, planning zoning.
Before you, uh, because I'm going through it real quick, on, uh, page sixty-nine, the town buildings maintenance, um, the, the telephone there, uh, going again with that thirty-six to four, you know, extra four grand. It seems that it's been going up, you know, quite a bit.
The telephone was weak, was really super duper high, it was like fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then thirteen, we did the deal.
Yep.
And got about a seven thousand dollar credit in there that I forgot about, so then we got this thirty-six thousand dollars in there.
Yeah.
And then we gotta switch over from a few cheaper phone lines that were on, uh, telecom, to go over to, uh, uh, Comcast, which is a little bit more expensive. So that was, that was, you know, it's a ballpark estimate of what I think it was gonna be.
That, then we just, we were talking about previous couple lines back, about that extra, you know, telecommunications increase, would that be part of that one too? You know, with the phone, or, you know, what actually are we doing for phones, like new phones or systems? I just don't see that increase, you're, you're looking at a four, ten percent increase from last year.
We wanna take off, enough, and then if it's higher, it's higher, I don't, but.
How good were you, did you do that, taking a thousand off?
Somewhere in spite, you know, there's a limit or not, but it's all true.
There needs to be consensus by the group?
Page sixty-nine. Fifty-three zero zero one, telephones.
You've taken a thousand off of the gas and diesel fuel.
Yeah, we took a thousand off the gas and diesel already.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking at the, uh, zero zero one with the telephone, for the forty thousand, about ten percent.
All I would say is I would rely more on time for that, so whatever.
Yeah, exactly, that's right.
I don't, I don't have any personal insight into.
Me either.
So, so I, I don't know that you just pull a number, I mean, if, if you think that the number you have there is comfortable. It doesn't necessarily help to reduce it, it only has to be late.
Put it back later, right. Excuse me?
Online item?
Yep.
Five three zero zero one.
Yep.
That will read thirty-nine thousand instead of forty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Did you wanna start and then come back to this, or?
Well, how much more do you have?
I have probably about five more questions.
Well, why don't, why don't you, why don't you finish what you have, and then we'll go.
All right, um, planning, uh, what was that, um, planning zoning seventy-seven, um, court transcripts, we have a, a thousand budgeted, we've, uh, expensed zero so far for the current budget, and we expensed nothing for thirteen fourteen as well, and only two forty back in twelve to thirteen. I was thinking we could turn this to five hundred.
We just need to know that when they go to any kind of a court case, um, we have to transcribe the activity that occurred at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so that's what that cost would be, right, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, just do this, uh, this page, turn the page, it's seventy-nine, all right?
Yes.
Just look at the insanity that it costs to do one case for one amount.
On thirteen fourteen.
So it's just, I mean, that's real pure guesstimation, every year, leave a thousand dollars in each account, because maybe you got it, maybe you don't, but the years where you're gonna, you know, the possibility it might blow up on you if you do it, so.
I'm sorry.
You know, a thousand is a reasonable estimate, if you have a reasonable item, if you have something huge or big, it's gonna blow you right up, because it's expensive.
Excuse me, Tom, that thirty-nine ninety, that was like for one case time?
That was like one thing.
One thing, and you did four Gs in it?
You remember that.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, I didn't know it was that much, but.
Yes.
So our transcript is gonna cost us six, seven hundred dollars.
Yes.
I just like the idea of if you took five hundred out, it would have been a zero percent increase, so that's why I like that, but, uh, no, I understand, that makes sense. Um. I guess, uh, let's see, economic development, I had a question on the, um, right, oh, I'm sorry, this is actually, I just was going over the year to date, and I just, I was wondering what the, um, year to date looks like incentive is, um.
Incentive, Brian?
Uh, E N C, um, for, you know, was that?
Encumbrance?
Probably the person's, uh, contract probably hasn't been agreed yet.
Uh, okay, I was just, when I just went through, um, this, I was wondering why, uh.
I think the town clerk, he used to be the director.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was an encumbrance there?
Yeah, okay.
So those are the type of items, I think people were thinking if there's money available, that would go to capital, I think, and for the open, uh, for the, uh.
Complete streets.
Those are the things, that's, uh, I don't need to use, you have a whole.
And last was, um.
That budget's been reduced by almost forty percent.
Yeah. You know, scraping the bone here, um, page ninety-nine, uh, library, the only thing I had was postage seemed to be, um, a little bit under, we've only spent six fifty-two so far this year, and we have twenty-eight hundred budgeted. I mean, could we bring that down a little, I think?
I don't know, um.
Five hundred, okay.
I'm probably on five hundred, you know, I'm trying to, you know, if I'm just special, things come up, and possibly just be able to, you try to get a hundred more from it, probably still have.
What do you guys think? All right, five hundred for postage. And, uh, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, program services under Board of Selectmen, they reduced their budget by a thousand dollars.
They did?
Well, is there consensus on that? Well, they talked about it, let's go over that. The Board of Selectmen, you reduced your budget, which has a zero percent increase, you, you reduced it by a thousand dollars?
The pages, that's what I-
Program services is what I had.
Nineteen, it was, uh, meetings.
Or the board clerk payroll, I, I don't know. So you wanna cut your budget by a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Five hundred under payroll for your clerk? And five hundred under program services?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I had page twenty-nine.
Five hundred bank fees.
Five hundred reduction in bank fees, yep, I had that, Tom. Page sixty-nine. We had a thousand off telephone. Page ninety-nine. We had a five hundred reduction in postage. For a grand total of, um, one, two, three thousand dollars.
How much was that, sir?
Three thousand dollars. So your budget would increase, instead of one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars, it would increase by one hundred twelve thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars. Budget is reduced by, I mean, your budget increases zero point nine one percent. Instead of zero point nine four.
Do you wanna go into regular meeting, or just keep going with this for a bit?
Um-
Because there's some things I'd like to talk to you.
In, in terms of the general government?
Take a little, do the other thing, take a little break, come back, what kind of situation?
What does the rest of the board wanna do? Do you wanna start the, uh, regular meeting then?
What is on the agenda for the, uh, just-
Well, to adoption of the budget.
Oh, all right, nice to hear. All right. On, uh, I mean, I have several cuts from, I, I, or questions I have, but they're really not, you know, it's the same thing, it's what we're cutting here, very little scalpel and very little mouse, just try to get it, keep it as close as we can. Uh, so I, the only one I have, I was kinda looking at, and I'm glad, um, our fire marshal's here too, is on his budget, he had like a ten percent increase, and I guess it's basically how much, how many hours he's gonna be necessary to do it. Do you think that we could cut that back a little bit, and do a, instead of a ten percent, could do a five and five, five for this year, I mean, it's kind of a large, you know, one-shot deal, and I, I don't see us, uh, doing a lot of work, you know, new work, I don't know where you, you know, doing a ten percent increase.
The problem that we've had is that we're seeing an increase in workload with the inspection of departments that we've been lacking in spec-
Yeah, I mean, I know, this has been ongoing for three, four years, you've been talking about this getting-
Right. I think, I think right now, I'm projected at almost a twenty-five hundred dollar deficit going into, I just submitted, uh, March's payroll, twenty-five hundred dollars, but, uh, I, I don't, I don't, I think like you said earlier, we're, we're hitting the ball here, you know, you guys, if you wanna cut, you cut, I come back for more, I think, you know, I'll be back there.
The percentage in that one is-
Yeah, you go up a couple hundred dollars, it's a, it's a, you know, double-digit increase, I know you do this every year.
That's the issue, the factor. I know you have that.
Ray, Ray, did I understand you say that there's a budget, and you're going into a deficit?
Right now that I could be facing, I think last year we, um, were at twenty, Tom, Tom made a four thousand dollar appropriation to cover, uh, a deficit of like twenty-seven hundred dollars last year, I think. And what happens is, you guys adopt a budget, and with the appropriation that Tom makes, I'm actually, we spent more of the year before than what he would do for, for the next year, that's how this keeps working the last couple of years, so.
We had quite a few fires this year.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's-
That would come out of that line item.
It's been relatively quiet as of, as of fifteen, but, um-
I don't, I don't understand what you said, all I'm asking is that, so there's a budget, and you're supposed to keep in, in the budget, that's all I'm asking, do I understand?
Right, which-
Should you stay in the budget, or you're already over?
No, because, um, the way I look at it, um, is, we have a responsibility and obligation to, 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 to conduct the inspection that we do, and I can't control what happens on a weekly basis. I've told Susan, and I tell Tom in our meetings, my salary line item is like an overtime budget, and we stay within usually that, or we go over ten percent. The last few years that you guys have cut the budget, is when I've had to come back.
Your year-to-date right now is like, uh, according to the last paper I had, was roughly, around numbers, twenty, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand.
That I've spent, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you got a few more, so you've still got twenty-seven percent left.
So, uh, March is going to-
So that's on the, yes, okay, so then that's for the, um, for the, uh, with the thirty-eight thousand, four hundred budget.
So that's will be, if I stay at the twenty-five hundred, which I just had for March-
Yes.
I barely get by, correct?
Well, all right, so you, that's what I'm saying, you're, you're okay with that. So now you're looking for another ten percent higher, do you, that's what I'm saying, can't you get along with like a five percent more budget, we're giving you an increase of five percent, and you're coming in, you say, within your budget right now?
Right, but, I, I, what I, what we're continuing to do is chip away at the twenty-five years of neglect that previous administration's done with that office, the counties for years, neglected that position. And while I'm running it, what I'm gonna do is do the best I can to make sure that these properties are safe, and to keep us away from the liability. You guys wanna take twenty-five hundred dollars from that, make you happy? So, yeah.
I'm just saying, if you're, you're doing your job under, in budget now, which you're doing a good job, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you.
That's not the point here.
No, 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 I understand.
And, and if you kept up that job, which you're doing a good job, and you come in with the same budget, you're asking for ten percent higher than a budget that you're, you're doing well with right now.
Well, you know-
That's what I'm saying, so if you gave you a five percent increase instead of a ten percent increase, you're still getting five percent more than what you're running at a good job right now, and which we all appreciate and hope you can, you'll live with that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the only thing is, is like, even like for myself right now, is when the problem is, like, I only had fifty hours for the month of March.
Yeah.
I average usually sixteen, sixty-five, seventy, so, our average, if the previous month, I have to get a breakdown of it, we're usually more like three thousand, thirty-five hundred a month. And, uh, yeah, like I said, I come back for more when I run out, that's what I do. You guys wanna make a decision to remove that money?
So, it's not removing the money, it's not increasing.
Well, and what, what I try to tell you is that, after talking with Susan and Tom, I would like to start increasing our inspection of these properties that-
Granted.
We're gonna lose some money, someday, Carl, and I'll, if you guys are gonna-
I know that, I'm not saying that, and I'm not arguing the point of, of what you're doing and how you're doing it, and I think you're doing a good job, and it's something that needs to be done because of public safety and the whole thing.
Right.
But right now you're in budget, you're doing well, you're doing good with it, if we give you five percent more this year to, to carry on, and maybe five percent next year to carry on, I don't, you know what I'm saying, just so that-
Yep.
Could you, could you, could you live with that, that's what I'm asking.
I could live with whatever you guys say, that's, that's fine.
The only thing I noticed is that, one, what I worked with Ray on this is that, we had, he had put together a proposal that was a little bit higher than this, I think it was came in initially maybe at fifteen percent.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, you know, and, and his numbers weren't, it probably, probably didn't mount, and when Susan and I looked at it, we couldn't come up with that. When we really looked at that, well, he's, we got in there now and just proposed, I don't have it in front of me, but when I had it broken down by person, by a guy that he's got, one of these guys himself, these guys, Will Ziegoff and the other gentleman, you know, they were, they were, I was able to take hours, times, numbers, and-
Exactly, yeah.
Actually make sense, this number.
Right.
To cut that, it's gonna back into not really making sense again. And so that's where I was, we were hoping that if you kept this constant, you know, I think then hopefully you'll, you know, you'll move forward, you'll help that department move forward, it's a small department.
Yeah.
And then hopefully be able to get, let me see, somebody's life savings off the table, so it gets a little reliability off of the town for having some of these things that are out there, you know?
I, I understand that, and I'm not arguing the point, I'm just sorry.
Wasn't the increase for computer work, or cars, or something, as it was?
Well, I, I-
As opposed to hours, I, I'm hearing hours today.
Well, no, I-
I thought it was for something else.
That was cut, that was already cut.
That was cut.
The capital's been removed, uh, it was scheduled for last, and that was cut. This year, we cut my computer. Uh, but the other problem is, is that as much as you don't see construction, Carl, we're at about-
I know, you gotta do all the old stuff.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, from the economic standpoint, we're at like at a ninety-five percent, uh, rate of builds that are, that have been filled over the past year and a half or so. So we, we have a lot of inspections and, and work with, with these existing buildings that are being occupied, and that's, that's creating a problem. And, and one of the problems is, is with these apartments, people don't have any money to fix anything, and we're going back and back and back, and it's actually frustrating for my-
Can you cite those people for, and final, to pay for your-
Um, we're, we're, we gotta talk about budget tonight, I mean, I, I wanna keep to the task. What's the, what's the consensus of the group, what do you want to do?
Well, if I could just follow up on your question, just for clarification, because it sounds, and maybe you're saying something different, it sounds like you're saying that you, you're gonna do whatever you do, and it doesn't, the budget doesn't really matter, is that, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Well, I, I, I run the office how I feel necessary to complete what we're required to do.
So the, the number doesn't matter to you, you're, it just is what it is, it sounds like?
It, it, it is to a point, and I stay within it, but I feel that something has to get done, I, it gets done. And that's how I run the office, it's, it's like snow, and, and, and overtime, you know? If something needs to get completed, we have projects that are in a thirty-day window, we have timeframes that need to meet for abatement orders on, on violation notices, so those things have to get done, and then what you just can't do is say, well, now that we're out of money for this week, we can't do anything next week. We gotta keep the door open three days a week, and that's what, that's what the frustration's been, and-
I, I suppose if every department did that, though, we'd, we'd be in a major hole, right? I mean, if everybody just said, I'm gonna spend what I spend?
Well, you, you know what, Brian, if it was funded properly, we wouldn't have to go through this ever again. I, I've talked to you several times about this, and, and at times, you know, you've listened, and other times you've never called me back, so, I mean, we should've talked about this prior to the budget and said that-
Sure, very well, I'll tell you, as I sit here today, I love your attitude, it's wonderful, it's really refreshing, I really appreciate it.
I'm just, I'm just, you know how I-
I'm more than happy to cut it to ten percent.
That's fine.
Sure.
Go ahead.
We are on the discussion about whether to make a change, is that where we are? I'm, I'm more or less inclined to stay pat at this point.
Stay pat. I stay pat. Kathy?
I would consider five percent.
Ryan?
Um, I could do five, if, as long as we're talking five next year as well, that's, and also because, you know, if we need the work, we need the work, it's gotta be done.
There's not consensus. We have ten, we have five, and we have stay pat, so, what are you gonna do?
Five's fine.
Okay.
I'll go five.
Okay, so three are to keep it as is, and four are to cut it five percent.
Cut five.
I'm sorry? Howard?
No, cut five, four, three?
Yeah, that's all we got, great, we lost. You do also need to be aware that as we proceed, we're hoping that there will be some additional development next year.
No.
And there will be reviews, um, done by this office, let me just finish.
I'm sorry.
As well as when there are fires, these, these have to be attended to, and reports have to be written. The number that we put in is the number that we believe is a good number, so your reduction means we may come back, just so you know.
Well, in EP, we can, when they have that, um, yeah, we can come back, but, I'm just saying, it's just keep that, you know, I wish, I wish he didn't leave, so you can, you know, further-
And I'd like to request a meeting, and I want Ray to come back here, and I want him to explain what he does, and I don't appreciate his attitude, I mean, I don't.
Well, first, first, okay.
I don't, and it's time, time again.
I understand, I understand. First of all, this is not a workshop for-
I understand, but I'm just making it a recommendation.
Each department, this is deliberations.
Sure.
So, we did have this on the agenda during the workshop season, so, and I don't recall a lot of discussion. But we'd be happy to have an additional discussion, as you, as you said, Brian, absolutely. But that's why we hold our workshops, so that we can ask these questions, and during deliberations, when you get into the discussions of a workshop, it, it gets more complicated because not everybody is here tonight, the fire chief couldn't be here tonight, for example, and some of our other department heads can't be here tonight because it's a workshop.
None of those responses were helpful in any way, they weren't.
So noted. So the number, Tom, would be what? Did you calculate it?
I would, uh, just move it. If you say two thousand?
I'd run it off to two thousand.
I'll wait for Tom.
We had twenty-two, two eighty. Is it a buck?
So, on the number of forty-two thousand, six hundred?
On the table, I'm right.
Is that what we're talking about? Folks?
I think we're in agreement, two thousand.
Two thousand.
Two thousand, okay.
Yeah.
So it'll, so line item one-one-zero-zero-three will read forty thousand, six hundred?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then we'll see, but next year, we always have to-
To repeat, page forty-seven, line item one-one-zero-zero-three will read forty thousand, six hundred.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's still a five point seven percent increase.
It's still a five percent, over five percent increase.
Okay.
So what is the, uh, final increase in percentage? Do you have that?
Five point seven percent increase, two thousand dollars, forty thousand, six hundred.
That's only on the first line item, Ryan, so the bottom line would be a little different.
Yeah.
Right.
Another two thousand, two thousand, five thousand?
Yep.
I don't have enough light here, I can't. They wanna know that the percentage changes. They're not done. You're not done, correct? You're not finished, correct?
I'm done, I don't know about-
I had a couple of other little ones, I, I could.
Go ahead.
Give me a minute, I'm gonna try a minute.
Absolutely.
Or if you wanna go on.
Nope, there's, um, any other selectmen have another page?
I'm all right.
Fred?
No, I have no, nothing to add, the only thing is, I'm not gonna go to Carl's breakfast if he goes too long.
You know, it's this Saturday.
You know that. And then we're doing the walk, right, Saturday after.
Howard, are you all set?
Yeah.
Kathy?
All set.
Brian?
All set.
Ryan?
All set.
Carl?
Working.
Working on it.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry. Take your time.
No, I can't do that.
Tom does not have a computer here.
Yes.
So what he's going to do is go back to the office and get the numbers, is that right, Tom? And you still need to address the Board of Education.
Well, you know, we could go, can I just write the numbers, 'cause then I'll go out of the room. for more, just questions, and then go from there.
Okay.
On, on page 31, where we went back to collector of revenues, uh, the service contracts on that that were increased. I'm sorry about that.
The $500 increase?
Yeah.
On service contracts?
Yeah, I wanted to see on, on the year-to-date so far.
Okay.
That's what I was working on.
Okay. I'm sorry, Tom. Those contracts do get paid later in the fiscal year?
Because it feels like 22%, I guess, so far, I'm just wondering if we...
The digital liability is a huge payment to make.
It's, a lot of these are probably time-sensitive, we're, like you were saying.
Right.
I understand it, I don't have that...
It's a good question. Thank you.
All right. So that, you, you feel that we're gonna need that extra, that extra money for this year, the way it stands right now? 'Cause we are, we still got 70% of our money in the budget, and you're asking for an increase? I don't even know its minimum.
Putting the 0.7 increase on this budget's reasonable.
Not asking over the whole...
I'm answering that over the whole, 'cause I don't know how to answer it a different way. But I, I feel that that's the number, or it's within reason. If you wanna take out 500, take out the 500, I, I don't know what to tell you. The, the gentleman was leading, getting us a response on his updated group quote, so I don't have that specific number, so I'm going off what I think is...
Okay.
Remember, the budgets are, are, are our estimates, so...
I understand.
When we have very, very close numbers, I, I can't guarantee that they're all gonna hit the mark exactly, and when it's 0.7%, it's tight in that.
The reason I'm just asking was, you know, we got a couple months left in, in the year, and we still got 73% left in the budget, and you're asking for an increase, I just wanted to see if we really need that.
Consensus on that? Is there a consensus on that one?
If you need it.
To leave it, to leave it?
All right.
Fred?
Leave.
Okay. Consensus is to leave it.
And can I ask us a, a curiosity question? It's not, it's, it's not even for anyone, forget it. And, all right, on page 37, our general town council money, I'm sorry, planning and development, no, general town council. I was wondering, how are we doing with that? We had 8,000 two years ago. We budgeted it for 22.5, we stayed at the same...
We negotiated four contracts in one year. The contracts ran over and we went into arbitration.
Yep.
And we are in pension negotiations this year.
Right now.
For the, for the coming year. No, we haven't entered them.
Yes.
We are due to do so, though. And there was a 0% change.
Yes, I understand.
And there's a reduction in this budget from fiscal year 14. Just, 'cause a lot of people don't have the book in front of them.
And I, I do applaud that.
So I wanna point out.
You know, that we've worked very hard and doing really well, and that's not, I'm just wondering why the, if we'll be okay with that number with the 22.5, I think, uh, general council, that's all.
Isn't that what we have?
We have 30, we're looking for an increase.
That's planning and development matters, which we are anticipating.
General stays the same.
General stays the same.
Yes, and the, and the planning and, uh, general town.
We, we are anticipating additional development matters this coming year.
That's good.
We hope.
It is good.
We hope.
Yes, we hope so, for sure.
But that is a switch from labor and pension matters, um, you know, down, down below there. So there is some changing in the allocation of that budget, but the bottom line remains the same.
One more, 'cause the others are just minimal, 500 here, 300 here, and I understand that, and we're just, I think we can live with it, we're doing really well.
Okay.
The only other one number is, and we, we talked about this one before.
Okay.
In the highway...
Page?
Uh, page, I think it's 59.
Okay, 59?
Yeah, on the highway department, um, for the street signs?
Yes.
We, I remember two years ago, I think we had like a $10,000 budget, and we did two breaks of 5, instead of one, one big one. And now we're back up a 10 again. Is, I, I know we were doing well with, you know, it looks like you're averaging out around five grand, that's what we budgeted before, but we went a little higher.
Rick?
I just wanna know how we're doing.
Rick, Rick's gonna update us on that.
Yeah, please, Rick.
We're mandated, we're mandated to, uh, come up to standards, we have, we'd be in violation, so, um, it's a real big number, so we've been kinda trying to do it in-house. In other words, by, well, we're, we're past it.
Okay.
By bringing our signage up.
That's a very important...
Appropriate standards.
I understand.
So, we've been increasing this budget, doing it in-house. Practically probably what we should be doing is putting in a big, big number, tens and tens of thousands, and hiring it up. So we're, you could cut it if you want.
I'm not, I'm saying that we were doing, we were doing like a five grand a year increase on our signage, and she had...
And that was when we were a year behind, now we're three years behind.
Don't cut that one. I do not recommend that.
So we're like running behind, even with the money increasing, we're running behind because of the mandates.
Do not cut that.
How many, once, once it's done...
Can we keep to the budget tonight? I, I really wanna keep to the budget if we could. Thank you.
So you don't...
All right, thank you.
So, so you think we need that money right now for this budget?
Consensus of the group, street signs? Fred?
Stay pat.
Howard? Kathy?
Increase it by 10,000.
Ryan?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
Keep it, add 10,000?
Hold that 10,000.
Add 10, or?
I do not agree with Brian.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna leave it as it is?
Thank you, Brian. All right, fine. I just wanted to make sure it was there.
It's a good question.
And I know we were working on this, this is not a new thing, it's something we have been working on for like four, five years.
Yes.
And that's with the uprights, all the new signage, so they have to reflect, so they're...
It's, it's every sign you got, and it's a, yeah, keep on your budget, but it's all the same.
Good, you tell me it's good, it's good.
Okay. Any other general government questions? Okay. So you've, um, you've reduced the budget by $5,000 additional. So your increase for the budget is $110,447 in general government, which reflects, um, less than a 1% change to the budget. Now, what I'd like you to do is go to Board of Education. Which my budget reflected a $50,000 reduction to the Board of Education's recommendation. And your current budget for the Board of Education? On page 3? The Board of Education is, in my recommendation, $19,732,92. Is that right, Tom? Tom? I just wanna repeat, $19,732,92. Is there a recommendation for keeping Pat changing? Increasing? What do you wanna do?
As I stated earlier during the workshops, I'd like to see that tightened up a little bit, and hopefully, I know that we have, you know, our contractual obligations with the union and so forth for, for income. I know we have to do some, um, our special ed work with, you know, what we have to do with the choice and, and the other things.
The choice doesn't have anything to do with special ed.
Well, you specialize, excuse me, I'm not... You don't understand what I'm saying. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, thank you.
I, I did ask for, um, any changes in fuel, and there's an approximate reduction of about $37,000. That would be similar to what I presented to you for general government, right?
On top of?
On top of your 50.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. So you, you, it doesn't reflect the 37 out of here now, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so take this number, take 37 on.
Laura, is that correct?
For fuel, heating, oil?
Yes.
Whatever.
Based on, on, on similar actions that we took in general government, yes.
Right time.
I don't know, I mean, you've been, you've been seeing us work tonight. We're, we're working awful hard to, you know, scrape the bones of this budget. Is there, do you guys think that you can do the same as well, anywhere?
You have, Ryan. I, I really think between the cut that already got done for 50, that Susan took out, the 37 more that we just took out, and the fear that already, in the span of time between when we presented this budget, and as we're sitting here today, we've already incurred an additional special ed expense of over $100,000 that we have to afford. So I am very hesitant to say that there's any more fat on the board. That $100,000 that we've heard this year becomes a $125,000, actually, it was $225,000. Want us to be physically responsible across the board, I think that it's more complicated in the Board of Education.
I know.
And I think you've seen a little bit of that coming to the meetings.
And I look forward to going to more.
We'd love to have you there.
Thank you. Thanks, keep bringing those cookies.
And well, I'll keep baking, I said apparently I'm not baking a lot. The situations that I bake for now, so, it's not in the budget either, if you're clear.
Carl? Ryan?
I wasn't expecting the 37.
No, I didn't know that, you just blindsided me on the 37. I'm glad, Ryan, I'm glad, glad, you know, I got the 10%.
We did our homework.
Yes.
Well, when you say blindsided, it sounds like I was trying to...
Excuse me, I didn't know the number.
Okay, you're, that's fine, Carl, I'm just...
Wish I had...
I know. Thank you.
That helps a lot.
So basically, we're taking the 87 from their original.
Yes.
And those 37 off yours.
Yes. Brian?
Sounds like there's a consensus.
Kathy? Howard? Fred?
I'm fine, I think you've done a good job, and you folks have done a good job last year.
Can we release Tom Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna take a brief, uh, we're gonna close the workshop, Laura, and then when Tom Robinson comes back, we'll convene a meeting.
Okay, before we close, one quick comment, is that I appreciate all of you for all the time, and you know how hard this is and how difficult it is, and I appreciate all of your time. You've all done a good job, and we tried really hard, I think we've done well.